Great, thank you. From my perspective, it all worked yesterday.[5.24][5.24](laughter) And so, of course, yesterday was Yom Kippur, one of the holiest days in the Jewish calendar. So I know that the only person that are more tired than rabbis are candidates. So, thank you for being here, and most importantly, thank you for being here. In the Jewish tradition, of course, it's in Deuteronomy that we learn the responsibility to teach our children. But it is not exclusively a Jewish responsibility to teach our children. All faith groups and beyond faith groups have the responsibility to teach. It's a responsibility of parents through our vote, actually, that we are partners with you on the Board of Education, who run the schools, and we need to be engaged in our schools with our principals, with our classrooms. We need to roll up our sleeves. And so, being here tonight is one example of rolling up our sleeves to make that happen. Our vote is upholding part of our civic responsibility, showing up at public events like this to uphold our duty, but also, I want to give each of you a charge as well. Because you, as candidates and members of the Board of Education, part of your duty is to us, is to set policies, make learning safe in communities for the tremendous diversity of MCPS. Right? There are over 160,000 students in MCPS with incredible diversity of race and sexual orientation and religion, countries of origin, and so much more. And we look to you to care for our children. That is a responsibility that we are bestowing upon you with our vote. And so, I appreciate you being here, asking hard questions, and listening for what they say. Thank you.[142.54][142.54](applause)
Okay. All right. Can you hear me? Should I just... Just hold it? Thank you. Oh. I think that's better. Okay. Thank you. You're a pro. All right. So, good evening, everyone. I am Galia Messica-Greenberg. I am Vice President of the JCRC Board and a member of this congregation, Congregation Bethel. In particular, relevant to this evening, I am the proud parent of three children who had MCPS, my oldest at Walt Whitman High School, our son at Thomas Pyle Middle School, and our youngest at Bradley Hills Elementary School. So, they have three levels covered this year. I'd like to first thank Congregation Bethel and Rabbi Harris, who you just heard today, this evening, for hosting this important event. I'd also like to thank Greg Aronin, who's here, I know, and he's a friend and a fellow Bethel member, and also Walt Whitman parent, who helped plan tonight's forum. Lastly, we couldn't make this event happen without the support of the JCRC staff, who helped organize and promote it. As we all recognize, MCPS faces many critical challenges, including rampant antisemitic incidents, inconsistent educator training on antisemitism, frayed trust between administrators and the school board, and parents and students, and disparities in academic achievement, to name a few. The JCRC is engaged in all these issues and more. In the past year alone, we responded to nearly 200 antisemitic incidents, working alongside the superintendent, central office staff, and principals to address the problem, and supported parents and students who were targeted or impacted. We worked with the Montgomery County Jewish Educators Alliance to shut down an ill-informed anti-Israel ceasefire resolution that had been put before the local teachers' union. In this deeply challenging year following the war waged on Israel by Hamas on October 7th, we developed a guide for teens on how to talk about the war in Israel, and held numerous in-person and virtual training sessions to hear about their experiences and provide additional support. Our innovative student-to-student peer education initiative reached approximately 2,000 students in Montgomery County by facilitating informal discussions between high schoolers about Judaism and Jewish culture. We brought Holocaust speakers and second-generation survivors to dozens of schools and other student groups, giving non-Jewish students a firsthand perspective of that dark moment in our Jewish history. And we continue to work alongside MCPS leadership to address educational equity so that all students can reach their full potential. Before I introduce the candidates, let me point out to the info sheets you all should have picked up in the front. They look like this. And the QR codes next to each candidate links to their campaign websites. So, we encourage you to click on those and learn more about the candidates. On the back, you'll find important election dates and QR codes for early voting locations, and also to find your election day polling precinct. We also handed out a separate flyer promoting several JCRC events, and we encourage you all to attend those as well. We are thrilled, this evening, to have all six candidates running for three seats on the school board with us tonight, joining on the stage from left to right, and maybe raise your hand when I call your names. So, running for an at-large seat, Lynn Harris and Rita Montoya; running in District 2, Brenda Diaz and Natalie Zimmerman; and running in District 4, Shebra Evans and Laura Stewart. Thank you. I'd also like to recognize others who are with us here today in the audience, County of Staff or Council Member Gabe Albernose-Beth Schuman (applause). Okay, great. Thank you all for being here tonight. Last but not least, I'd like to thank all of you, our audience, for coming out during a very busy time on the Jewish calendar. You all took the time to attend this important event and hear from our candidates about issues that we really also care about. I'd now like to turn it over to our moderator for this evening's forum, JCRC's Chief Operating Officer, Gila Franklin Siegel. Gila, the stage is yours.[484.61][484.61](applause)
Thank you, Galia, and thank you to all of you for being here, both those who are here in the sanctuary and the many people who are watching this event on live stream. And I want to echo Galia's thanks to our candidates for making yourselves available to be here this evening. We really appreciate it. I also want to thank several JCRC Board members who are here. Thank you for being here. And thank you to our student timekeepers, who are Cece and Gabby Cox in the front row from Walt Whitman High School, and Samuel Bukowski-Cristensen from John F. Kennedy High School. They are seated right here. Let's thank them for volunteering tonight. Here's the format. Each candidate will have 90 seconds for an opening statement about why they are running, their background and experience, their priorities, and anything else they wish to share within the allotted time. After opening remarks, I will ask six questions, affording each candidate the opportunity to answer one question first. These questions were developed, in part, by audience recommendations that were submitted when you registered for tonight's event. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer each question, and we'll move down the line until all candidates have replied. I will then allow candidates to issue any rebuttals. Each candidate will have only one opportunity, lasting 30 seconds, to respond to another candidate or candidate's comments if they choose. This time may not be used to complete a thought from your original remarks or to speak about an unrelated topic. The student timekeepers will hold up a yellow sign when you have 30 seconds remaining, and they will hold up a stop sign when you are out of time. We won't be taking questions from the audience tonight. That's why we asked you to submit questions in advance. And there won't be any closing statements, but we invite you, those of you who are here in person, to approach and mingle with the candidates after we conclude the program. And if you have further questions that don't get answered, please feel free to email them to JCRC, and we'll do our best to get them to the candidates. We ask everyone who is present to display appropriate behavior, to not disrupt tonight's forum. We really want to be respectful of everybody's time and be respectful of the space. We do have security here. We'll ask anyone who acts inappropriately to leave. I am confident that will not be a problem this evening. With that, let's get started. I want to get right to the heart of the matter. Actually, we have to do opening statements first, so I apologize for that.[688.82][688.82](laughter) I wanted to get to it. Why don't we start with Ms. Stewart at the end?
How is this? Louder? Louder? How's this? Okay.[698.23][698.23](laughter) Sorry. First of all, thank you so much for having us here tonight. I really appreciate this opportunity. Lashana Tova, I hope you had a good fast. I know mine was a little more difficult than usual because I guess I'm now addicted to caffeine, so... My name is Laura Stewart, and I am running for the Board of Education in District 4. I've been a Montgomery County resident for 27 years, and my two children are MCPS graduates. Growing up in Bowie, Maryland, I learned about Takun Olom, which teaches that it is my responsibility to make the world a more just place. For over a decade, I've brought that work to leadership positions in six different nonprofit boards, including PTAs. I'm a relationship builder, who will work hard to ensure our kids get a world-class education. Our beloved school system is struggling to meet its potential. We're still woefully behind in reading proficiency scores, and we lag in math as well. Too many children experience hate in our schools and do not feel safe. I myself was once a target as a Jewish child. We must take antisemitism seriously. We need better training for staff and anti-hate education for students. I will also work towards smaller class sizes, access to mental health services, and work to implement concrete steps to improve safety. I have the experience to bring accountability, collaboration, transparency back to the Board of Education. Thank you.[789.73][789.73](applause)
Ms. Evans?
Good evening. Thank you to Rabbi Harris and the congregation for having us here tonight. I am Shebra Evans. I currently serve on the Board of Education. I've been on the board since 2016, and it's been an honor and a pleasure. My husband and I, we moved to Montgomery County. We'll be celebrating our 25th anniversary on October 23rd, and we moved to Montgomery County specifically for the public school system. Our daughter Sydney, she's a senior at Agnes Scott College in Decatur, Georgia. Sierra just graduated in June with a full scholarship to Ohio University, playing volleyball. It has been great for us. I live in the Aspen Hill-Glynnmont area, and I ran for school board because our children attended a school where the Title I was 90% of the students receiving free and produce-priced meals, and I wanted to make certain that our kids had access and opportunity, not only in the Wheaton County, in cluster, but all throughout the county. So, my commitment to equity and excellence has not wavered. We've been able to ensure that our students are having access to more advanced placement courses, they are taking more IB courses, they are really excelling in having access to more programs. We need to get better at making certain that we continue to make good on our promise, that our kids can graduate ready to thrive in their community, and so, that means being more focused on literacy and math. I look forward to all your questions and to answering and telling you a little bit more about myself. Thank you all.[876.93][876.93](applause)
Ms. Zimmerman?
Good evening. Thank you so much for being here, and Shana Tova. My name is Natalie Zimmerman, and I am running in District 2. Part of why I decided to run is because I am a current MCPS teacher. I teach 3rd grade, and I absolutely love what I do. I'm really passionate about my students and my fellow educators, which is why I'm here. I've seen every single day how the decisions that we make at the top are either completely uninformed, misinformed, or just disregard what's going on in the classroom every single day. I take this job very seriously, and I want to speak from the classroom and into policy. I believe that public education is the greatest act of optimism and the greatest investment that we can make in our students and in our community. I believe that the Board of Education needs someone who has actually been in an MCPS classroom, someone who has those connections, someone who can speak about what is happening, and to be able to speak that into policy and speak from that position. That's why I'm running for Board of Education. I hope to be a champion for our students and for our classrooms. Thank you.[937.23][937.23](applause)
Ms. Diaz?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. My name is Brenda Diaz, and I am running for Board of Education, District 2. So, just a little bit about me. I was born and raised in the Bronx, and I am the product of a gifted and talented program. In the 1980s, I was able to excel because of the amount of drive that my teachers were able to instill in me, and as a result, I was able to graduate from Georgetown University, School of Foreign Service, and then I ended up getting my master's degree and becoming a James Madison Memorial Fellow as a result for being an excellent teacher in social studies. Why am I running? So, I'm running because of the way I was brought up and because of the experiences that I had growing up. I had a teacher who believed in me, and that's what I want for our children today. Unfortunately, MCPS is failing our students. The primary purpose of education is to give our students, our children, opportunities for self-expression by equipping them to master one of the many means to do so. We're not doing that. Plain and simple. So, I want to come in as a former Gatersburg High School teacher, the teacher who's been in education now for 20-something years, from pre-K all the way to college, giving tutoring sessions to college students. My aim, my goal, is to make sure that all of our students graduate proficient, that they're able to succeed in the real world today. That is my goal, and thank you for your time. I look forward to your questions.[1031.01][1031.01](applause)
Ms. Montoya?
Good evening. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you so much for hosting, coming out on a Sunday night. My name is Rita Montoya, and I'm a candidate at-large for the Board of Education. I am a former juvenile public defender, a current attorney, a former PTA president, and executive board member, but most importantly, I am a mom. I am a mom of a 3rd grader and a 5th grader in MCPS schools, and so, I live MCPS every single day. And that's why I know that if we want our children to reach their goals, it's all hands on deck. We must elect leaders who know how to spend our money, our taxpayer money, wisely, so that we can determine if we have additional needs, and if we do, that we can figure out how we're going to fund them. We need smaller class sizes, we need more teachers, we need proven curricula with lesson plans and materials for all of our learners, we need extracurricular opportunities for all, and we need to get a handle on the safety issues that we see every day in our schools. From the hate bias, including what just happened a couple days ago at one of our MCPS elementary schools, to the physical violence, the guns, the weapons, the drug sales, and making sure that we have enough school psychologists, counselors, and social workers to help our children with the challenges that they have so that they can become everything they want to be. That's what I want for my kids, and that's what I want for all of our kids. Thank you.[1120.11][1120.11](applause)
Ms. Harris?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you to JCRC and this congregation for hosting this event tonight. And Rabbi Harris, I so appreciate the way you began by talking about the importance of educating our next generation as a collective activity, an opportunity for ongoing and consistent partnership, because it does take a village, it takes a community, and we are fortunate to live in the most diverse community in the United States of America. My name is Lynn Harris. My name is Lynn Harris. I currently serve as an at-large member on the Board of Education. When I ran for this seat in 2020, I was an MCPS teacher. I taught medical science at Thomas Edison High School of Technology, and I was a parent. My son has since graduated. He is a 2021 graduate of Einstein High School. But I'm also a nurse and a lawyer, and I have spent 12 years as a public school and public education advocate, as a local and countywide PTA leader. And that work gave me a wide and deep knowledge of the school system that I have brought with me every day, that I have done this work, and this job is all-consuming. Three and a half years in, my why is the same. I want to push MCPS to become a system where every student, every person, every day feels safe, feels welcome, feels valued, being exactly who they are. Thank you.[1212.83][1212.83](applause)
Better?
Yes.[1215.83][1215.83](laughter)
Okay. MCPS has struggled with skyrocketing antisemitism for the better part of three years, serious enough to trigger a federal Title VI complaint, a slew of national headlines, and a congressional subpoena for Board of Ed President Carla Silvestri. From graphic hateful graffiti on school property to teachers posting antisemitic conspiracy theories on social media accounts for everyone, including students, to see, the problems have been acute and persistent. What's gone wrong, and what needs to be done to turn the tide on this issue? I'm actually going to start with Ms. Harris, and then we'll go down.
Thank you. I think the work to ensure that MCPS becomes an anti-hate, anti-bias system is one of the most important things that we have to accomplish together as a community right now. What went wrong? I think that we have been living in very difficult times, and we have been living during times where hate in all of its forms has become normalized at some of the highest levels of our society. And so, it behooves all of us to model better behavior while we also deal with the fact that our students are receiving messages and images of all sorts and all types, almost 24/7, because of the way technology has become very commonplace. So, the procedures and the policies that we have to enact have to acknowledge the reality that we currently face and embrace all of those in our community in finding solutions and strategies that work, but it can't be a patronizing approach, which has not uncommonly been MCPS's way of doing things. It has to be an approach that involves every viewpoint, every piece of community wisdom, the students in particular, who live our schools every day, so that we are learning from them and with them to create better training, better classroom environments, and better curriculum.
Montoya?
Thank you. What's gone wrong? No, thank you. We need to call antisemitism what it is. So often, I see these stories in the news, I see things coming out from the school system, and we have to be more explicit. I have two kids, they're 8 and 10. You can't beat around the bush, or have them guess, or have them figure out why something's not okay. You need to be very explicit. I recently had an MCPS staff member tell me, sometimes the kids misbehave, and I correct them, and it's like they've never been corrected before, like no one's ever told them it's not okay to behave that way. And that's what we need to do. They're children, even in high school. We need to be very explicit about why something is not okay, the impact that it has on the community, our Jewish community, is what we're talking about here, and they really need to understand. And if we're not doing that in our schools, we can't be sure that that's happening at home. In some homes, it is. In my home, it is, but we don't know that for sure, and so, we can address that in our schools, but we can't just give the kids, hey, don't do that, hey, that's not nice, no, we shouldn't act, you know, we shouldn't be antisemitic. What does that mean? Do the kids know what that means? Do our staff know what that means? Have our current board members undergone training to understand fully what that means? Right? So, yes, it absolutely starts at the top, at the Board of Education.[1436.83][1436.83](applause)
Would you just repeat the second part of the question? Just the two questions?
Okay. Can you hear me now? Yes. Okay. It's basically what's gone wrong and what needs to be done to turn the tide.
So, what I believe what's gone wrong is that our schools have turned from centers of learning, discovery, curiosity, knowledge, and scholarship to centers of cultural and political controversy. Our teachers are no longer neutral in political or cultural happenings in our society today, and our children are immersed on a daily basis in the controversies of our time. Children should not be engaged in the sort of conversations that we, as adults, are having. And so, unfortunately, they are being exposed to ideas that are completely inappropriate for their age. What they should be exposed to are the principles and ideals that founded our country, including religious freedoms. Those principles and ideals maintain high rigor, high behavioral expectations in our schools. This is how we keep our children focused and on task in what's important for them, in what they need to grow up. What I believe we need to do is to make sure that we support administrators and teachers to enforce the student code of conduct when there's bullying, harassment, small things such as compelling teachers to talk about and to teach about the Holocaust by just requiring questions, informative and substantive assessments. We should be offering classes through the professional growth system that we have within MCPS. And honestly, we should issue unexcused absences and politically motivated protests that our children are holding. Thank you.[1554.63][1554.63](pause)
Now? Great. Okay. I personally believe that we need to start with the Board of Education itself. It's my understanding that the Board has been offered antisemitism training and has declined. I don't understand why that's happened. We absolutely need to accept that training and hear from our community. I have heard from a fellow educator that after October 7th, she went to her administration, and she said, "I believe that we are going to see a rise in antisemitism amongst our students." And the administrator looked at her and said, "How will we recognize it? How will we know that it's happening?" And while I believe that that administrator cares deeply, they don't know how to recognize antisemitism. We need true training for our administrators, for our educators, so they can recognize it when it's happening. Hearing that there is peer-to-peer sessions happening with students, I think that's a wonderful place. But I believe our educators and our administrators also need to be hearing from their students. What's actually going on in the student experience? I also believe that our social media best practices is not strong enough. I believe that we need a social media policy so it's easier to tell when someone has crossed the line and when it has gone too far. Thank you.[1636.11][1636.11](applause)
It was stated earlier that much of what we see happening in our schools is a result of what we see happening in our country, and I do believe that is true. What I do take pride in is that we have great partners, such as JCRC, who has been working very closely with our school system to help our administrators and staff with professional development. We have been talking really closely with our partners, because I believe it's important to inform, to consult, to involve...
And honestly, we should issue unexcused absences and politically motivated protests that our children are holding. Thank you.
Now? Great. Okay. I personally believe that we need to start with the Board of Education itself. It's my understanding that the Board has been offered antisemitism training, and it has declined. I don't understand why that's happened. We absolutely need to accept that training and hear from our community. I have heard from a fellow educator that after October 7th, she went to her administration, and she said, "I believe that we are going to see a rise in antisemitism amongst our students." And the administrator looked at her and said, "How will we recognize it? How will we know that it's happening?" And while I believe that that administrator cares deeply, they don't know how to recognize antisemitism. We need true training for our administrators, for our educators, so they can recognize it when it's happening. Hearing that there is peer-to-peer sessions happening with students, I think that's a wonderful place. But I believe our educators and our administrators also need to be hearing from their students. What's actually going on in the student experience? I also believe that our social media best practices is not strong enough. I believe that we need a social media policy, so it's easier to tell when someone has crossed the line and when it has gone too far. Thank you.
It was stated earlier that much of what we see happening in our schools is a result of what we see happening in our country, and I do believe that is true. What I do take pride in is that we have great partners, such as JCRC, who has been working very closely with our school system to help our administrators and staff with professional development. We have been talking really closely with our partners, because I believe it's important to inform, to consult, to involve, and to collaborate. And that means having conversations about what we need to do in our schools. We've included the Holocaust education into our curriculum. We can do more, we must do more. We made certain, coming back to the school year this year, that there was training provided for staff. Is it more that needs to be done? Absolutely. And as a board member, I commit, and I've never refused to have training. I'm always trying to make certain that I learn, I inform, and I get better, and I have great partners in our community. Our council president, I'm going to call him out, he's really great at saying, "Shebra, you all need to do more, and this is not enough, and it's not acceptable." And guess what? We try to make certain that we do more. This year, you had a letter welcoming you back to school, talking about the hate that we had seen, the antisemitic incidents that were happening that would not be tolerated. We also try to make certain that we are ensuring that we do more, right? So I'm at a stop now, but welcome more questions. Thank you.
So what went wrong? First of all, the... Well, it started before, October 7th, with Charlottesville, and all of a sudden, it became cool for kids to get on the internet and learn about all these antisemitic memes, and then that came into the school. But then, it really ramped up after October 7th. Some of it is definitely lack of training. I saw a meme that a teacher had shared, and I immediately saw it as an antisemitic trope, because I grew up learning what those were. Do our teachers know what they are? I don't know. So they definitely need more training, especially a good social media policy. You will have all kinds of kids in your classroom, and if your activity outside the classroom makes those kids feel unsafe, that is something we need to address, keeping in mind that we still do have freedom of speech. But the training could definitely be done a lot better. And then also, we need to work with our partners, like JCRC, to have better training, so the teachers can train our kids to do the same, and realize when they are crossing the line. And then there's just the blatant swastikas on a desk. I'm pretty sure all kids know that's antisemitic. So how can we show that that's doing harm, real harm to our kids? So we need to do that. Thanks.
Trying to make sure I stated into my comment, but the Board has never been offered, that I'm aware of, an opportunity to take training in antisemitism. My colleague, Julie Yang, on the Board of Education, she's out there, I want to acknowledge her. She's never received any information, and I don't think Ms. Harris has. Very open, and so whoever wants to provide the training to the Board of Education, we would absolutely do that. Our former councilwoman, Nancy Navarro, conducted training for statewide training for leaders, and we are very open to doing that.
So the role of the Board, of any Board, is to make sure that the entity or the organization that they are the Board of is running properly, right? In the general sense. So when we're talking about MCPS as a very large organization, it is the role of the Board to make sure that all of our students, all of our staff, because this is a place of employment, feel safe. And if there's antisemitism occurring, and our students and our staff don't feel safe, if our parents don't feel safe sending their kids to school, then absolutely, the Board of Education needs to get involved. If MCPS is not taking the right actions, if they're not sending out the right communications, if they're not making sure that we, as parents, know that when we send our kids to school, they are going to be safe in those school buildings, then yes, we must get involved. You asked about commitment to antisemitism training. Absolutely. I've done my best to really engage, so that I can learn also. It's a learning process, I think, for all of us, but we have to seek that out. And as Board of Education members, when I'm elected, I will make sure that that is brought to the table, so that we can receive that training, because we can't do our jobs if we don't. We have to make sure that we understand properly, that we are trained by the right organizations and experts, so that then we can collaborate with their school leadership, with our superintendent and our central office leadership, to make sure that they are also implementing the right training for teachers, for staff, for central office administrators as well.
Thank you, Ms. Diaz.
So the role of the Board of Education is to gear, to lead, to guide policy within whatever body it's supposed to be overseeing. So the Board of Education, unfortunately, has not been playing that role. Recently, in the Bethesda Magazine article that came out, the student board member of the Board of Education mentioned that it's actually MCPS that develops policy in many ways, and that the Board is lagging behind. So it's time for the Board to take the lead, especially when it comes to training, especially when it comes to making sure that our schools, once again, are centers of knowledge, and that we remain neutral in political and cultural controversies. What does that training look like? So as a social studies teacher, it's not just enough to click through. You know, that's something that's very standard for MCPS. You know, these classes need to be looking at the historical positions and perspectives of how antisemitism developed. If we have the historical understanding, then it's easier for teachers to move forward and be practitioners of non-hate, basically. So we need to have the historical understanding, and then put that in practice. So I really believe that in providing that training, and in making sure that we take on that leadership position within MCPS, that we can improve things within our school system.
Okay. Thank you. Part of the Board's role is to create and to enforce policy. And that the Board has not created specific policy that is condemning antisemitism is part of the problem, or that the Board is not stating that they condemn antisemitism is still part of the problem. I would like to commit, again, right now, that if antisemitism training is offered to me as a board member, I will be taking that training. I also believe we need to be asking our experts in the community to come join us and be our partners in this. I'm hearing that we have plenty of partners and plenty of members of our community that want to be engaged, and how are we choosing to engage them? It needs to be easier for our community members. The times that we hold our board meetings make it really hard for working parents and working families to come and join us and hear what we're talking about. Our location is one specific location. If we are changing our location, if we're changing our timing, then we're able to hear from more people in our community. I believe we can open up the number of slots that we have for people to testify before the Board, so people can come and speak to us, we can hear from our community members. I also believe we need better data in our bias reporting. As we're talking about things being reported, how are we tracking that? How are we hearing about it? As someone that has submitted bullying reports, I haven't heard responses back. That's a problem when we're trying to track that, and when people need to hear back from someone, to hear back about their report, they're getting nothing. We need to be much better in our response from that as well. Thank you.
So I can commit to a lot of things. I currently serve on the Policy Committee, and Policy ACA, Non-Discrimination, Cultural Proficiency, and Equity can stand to be revised and included and updated to include antisemitism, as well as other things. Like, as we've been going on this school year and the previous school year, I do believe that there's a need to go back and to revise policy. We are policymakers, and so we have over 400 policies, and what we're supposed to do is put new policies in place. If there's a policy that needs to be revised or amended, do that. And so that's the work of the Board. I can commit to doing that. We do have to get better at calling things out, right? We've not done that well in the past, and all I can do is do better. And I thought part of committing to doing better was putting out not only the welcome-back letter and calling out the incidents that happened that were external and forward-facing for the community, was in addition, making certain that ahead of October 7th, that we put out information to inform our community on what it is that our Jewish students are possibly going through, and how we could maybe have the conversation. Civility and kindness, we can do so much more of that, and that is infused in the curriculum. And we just really have to make a concentrated effort to do more, but also, we need to talk with our families about what's happening and how they're discussing community at home.
I absolutely believe the Board of Education does have a role in tamping down antisemitism in our school system. We definitely need to look at policies. I don't know why we haven't already, to tell you the truth. Antisemitism isn't new, right? Like I said, I experienced it back in the 80s, when I was a kid in school, being called a name, having my instrument stolen once. So let's go ahead and do full assessments of our schools. I don't think we've really done that. We don't know what the culture is in each of our schools, and each school is a little different. That culture gets passed down from the older children to the younger children coming in. So we need to stop the cycle, and we can do it by having these full assessments, having the full community come together, and identifying the problems. And then, that includes having better reporting, which Natalie mentioned. We know that hate incidents are not fully reported. Not everyone feels comfortable reporting. We do need to work on having responses when those bullying forms are filled out, or parents and children feel like it doesn't matter that they're being bullied. So let's work on those policies. I'd be ready to do that, and I would do that sooner than later. Thank you.
Ms. Harris.
Yeah. The job of the Board is governance, oversight, and accountability, and working alongside our one and only employee, the superintendent of schools, to make sure that we are evolving our work to address the challenges that emerge and the conditions that evolve and change. Part of that work is, I deeply believe, that every member of our MCPS community, that includes almost, if you include TPT, almost 30,000 staff members, 160,000 students, needs training to, not to be told what to think, but to help to learn about hate in all its forms, and to understand, from the perspective of others, what that looks like and what that feels like. I don't believe our trainings will ever actually be done, because I think we have to be open to the fact that our partners, especially our students and staff, need to help us create trainings that feel meaningful, that are authentic, that are effective, that do help us to be better at hearing one another, and seeing one another, and caring for one another. I think we need to make sure that our curriculum is true and authentic to the experience of the world, and that includes Holocaust education in great appropriate ways, starting in our elementary schools. Thank you.
I'd like to offer an opportunity for rebuttal, Ms. Montoya.
We absolutely need authentic training to combat hate bias and antisemitism, and we have experts right here, who are ready and willing, who have been ready and willing for quite some time, even prior to October 7th. We didn't see antisemitism in schools just because of October 7th. This has been going on. So yes, absolutely, the Board of Education needs to evolve their work, and they've had four years to do it. We need to elect new leadership who is ready to stop paying lip service and get it done.
I will add, just as a point of fact, that the JCRC has only been able to train 1,500 MCPS educators over the last couple of years. We do a joint program with the ADL, and we have not been able to get more than 1,500 people trained, even though we are ready and willing, specifically on antisemitism, as opposed to general hate and bias, which is also important. I want to move on to another subject that has been critically important to the Montgomery County Jewish community. Last year, in the weeks following October 7th, four teachers were suspended from MCPS for sharing language on a variety of platforms concerning the Israel-Hamas conflict that was deemed to be, by MCPS, antisemitic and disruptive to learning. As you know, the teachers were reassigned to other schools after their suspension, and the teachers are currently suing MCPS. What limits are appropriate to place on teachers regarding expressing their personal political views, whether in the classroom or elsewhere? And we will start with Ms. Diaz.
What limits on personal and political views? So our social media policy basically says that we should be very careful about what it is that we post. We should be mindful of the communities that we serve when we are posting anything on social media. I really think our teachers in Montgomery County, I was going to say don't understand, but I think we do understand how important of a role we play in Montgomery County. And the reason why I say that is because our schools' walls are often decorated with the ideals and the principles and the ideologies and the values that teachers want to instill in our students. I think it's very important that we respect and enforce the guidelines for respecting religious diversity. Our teachers need to know that we must respect all students, that we need to be neutral, once again, in our political and social and cultural controversies of the time. That is not our place. We are important people in this community as teachers, and we have to take that responsibility very seriously.
Ms. Zimmerman.
Thank you. None of us can know all of the details that have happened with this, as it's a personnel matter, but I do believe the system could have done a better job of releasing kind of a menu of options, right? If someone violates this, then X, Y, or Z may have happened, so the community knows that something happened, that they weren't just put back into a position with no consequences. I do also believe that our social media best practices needs to strengthen to a firmer policy. I can tell you that I have done the social media best practices training. I did it in August. It's another click-through. It's a video, and at the end, I have to click on, it's one link, and it opens like one webpage, and that's about it. It's not enough for us to truly know what the policies are, and it just offers some best practices for us. I, yeah. I think that strengthening that and making sure that we can release some more, not not divulge all the details, but offer some more information when it comes to these issues, it can be useful for our community to know that the system has a plan and that we're planning to do something about it. Thank you.
So we have 25,000 employees and when things happen, when you know better, you do better. So as a result, what I feel good about is that we try to work to make certain that we can course correct and put different mechanisms in place. So in terms of the social media, the social media is best practices and it does need to be a policy. And so we are always discussing what it looks like when employees are doing and saying things on their own personal time and how we handle that. But as Ms. Zimmerman said, some of it is personnel matters, but we could do a better job at informing the community about what it looks like in terms of the different steps and what it looks like when we're putting reprimands in place. So we can always do better. I don't have anything else to say other than that and this has been definitely a difficult year in trying to make certain that we're teaching our kids how to be good citizens, how to interact alongside their peers. And what we can do more of and what I'm going to be charged with doing as the Chair of the Communications and Stakeholder Engagement Committee is to have more conversations like this, not during reelection season, but just ongoing so that we can get out to the community, have conversations, discuss our feelings and thoughts in terms of what we see happening and what we want to see more happen. Thank you.
We, first of all, those four teachers that were reassigned, each had a different situation and I would think might have had different consequences, but again, it's a personnel matter, so we don't really know. I do agree that we should share more of what those consequences are, so at least the community has some idea. Also, we need to really look at that social media policy. The teachers are really partly public servants, so when they go in front of a classroom, the kids there need to know that they feel safe, wanted, accepted in that classroom. And if a social media activity crosses a line where those kids don't feel safe, then that affects the environment in the classroom. So this is something we need to really work with teachers, keeping in mind that we still do have free speech, but we can work out the kind of messaging that we give out. And then also, again, that training is so important, so I would really push more training so our teachers understand when they are crossing the line. Thank you.
Ms. Harris.
I think one of the things that has happened in the past year, as I have actually make a point of taking every year, all of the training that we require all of our teachers to take, so I can experience it myself and get a sense of what it's like, how engaging it is, how effective it is, what's missing. And I do believe our code of conduct and the messaging that we send out to teachers at the beginning of the school year made clearer than I've ever seen, the fact that teachers, public school teachers are public servants and they do not enjoy as robust free speech rights, both in their private and in their, of course, professional lives because of the role that they play in engaging with young students and young minds. And we, it's never going to be perfect. 25,000 employees, it's going to embrace the full diversity of humanity, which includes every form of hate bias that's ever existed in the world. What we have to do is manage it and what we have to do is make sure that the policies are clear, people understand in a much more interactive way, and I agree with Natalie, I took that training, not interactive enough. It needs to be much more explicit, but we will evolve that training. We will improve it. And what we need to do is make sure that every student feels safe, welcome, and valued in their classroom.
Ms. Montoya.
So I guess I'm feeling a little confused here because the question was, what limits are appropriate to place on teachers in and out of the classroom? And I'm hearing, and I think it's great that the teacher training is taken by maybe some even more of our board members, but if that's the case, then why are we still doing the same old thing? Right? We knew that antisemitism, we had higher incidents even before October 7th. We seem to know that the teacher training is not adequate, but yet we do it over and over again. So we have a real opportunity here to actually change something, right? Yes, we have the First Amendment, we're attorneys, all three of us actually, right? We know that that applies. But we also have policies, when you're an employee, there are rules and things you have to abide by. So if we have wishy-washy policies or best practices or things that say, use your judgment, that's not a clear directive to employees and that is not the way that a place of employment operates. We need to be very explicit, just like we need to be with our students, so that teachers and staff fully understand what they can and cannot do, both as just a process of employing a person. You can't then penalize them if you have not made it clear what they are permitted to do and not. So absolutely, we need to tighten up the policies, but if we're aware that this teacher training has been inadequate for three to four years now, then we are long overdue on taking action. We also just need to establish a culture of kindness. If someone came to me and said, Rita, when you said this thing or you did this thing, maybe you didn't realize, but this is the impact on me and my community, I would immediately educate myself and stop. Thank you.
Anyone for a rebuttal? Ms. Diaz.
I want to add that, and it's a rebuttal in the sense that the click-through definitely is not sufficient, but we also need to be, as a Board, taking on a leadership position and going before each of our schools, having those meetings with our teachers, you know, before or after school, whatever needs to be done, to communicate to our teachers that this is our policy, this is what we need to do. We also need to revise the contract so that it is explicit, it is clear what the consequences will be. The contract is very long and detailed, but it's something that we can do.
Thank you. I want to build and follow up on something that some of you mentioned in your responses to the last question. Many of the systemic problems that are impacting Jewish students and employees are also deeply impacting other marginalized student groups, which is part of the reason that the JCRC belongs to the Black and Brown Coalition for Educational Equity and Excellence. One of the most important across the Board is the consistent lack of transparency and the failure to communicate effectively and sensitively and with cultural sensitivity with families. What should be done to improve that situation? What should be done to improve transparency and communications, especially with respect to budget, discipline, human resources, to restore trust between Montgomery County Public Schools and its stakeholders? We are starting with Ms. Zimmerman.
First, I want to state that last year's October 7th email that came out was much belated, but I also believed it was very inappropriate. It was a terrible form of communicating feelings to our community members that were deeply hurt and in fact, I don't wish to repeat parts of it because I was very offended by it. As we move forward, I do believe that when we're communicating, I've mentioned it before, that we need to make ourselves more available when we're communicating. Speaking of the Black and Brown Coalition, one of the things that they have been advocating for is an early warning indicator system. As a current teacher, I can tell you where I can click online, I can even picture it in my head. It's one button in the like left corner and I click down too, those early warning indicators pop right up for me. I can see them. And as our community is asking for this, we are able to communicate that information to them immediately. There are so many things, so many pieces of data that we have access to as MCPS that's not being released back to our community, to our families. I was speaking with an audience member recently and we were talking about that map data is available to all of our parents on Synergy. If anyone would like to find that, let me know. I'm happy to help you find it. It's things like this that we have available, but we're doing a terrible job of communicating to our families. We have a lot of channels that we can use, such as our parent community coordinators and our community schools to help us with this. Thank you.
Ms. Evans, before you respond, I'm going to repeat the question because I was told that people did not hear it, so I want to repeat it. I don't think the mic can get any closer to my face. The basic question is about a lack of transparency and communicating effectively and with cultural competency and what can be done to improve that, especially with respect to budget, discipline, human resources, to restore trust between MCPS and its stakeholders. I hope that was better.
That was a lot, but I think I got the gist of it. So we could always do better and I'll start with the budget. We need to make certain that it's Amazon easy and that, most importantly, that our funders understand the budget and so that will require for us to talk early and often about what type of investments that we're going to make and why. Everyone wants to make certain that with a $3.3 billion budget, that there is return on investment. Transparency, so two-way communication has been something that we need to get better at and I'm very committed to doing that. It just looks like, so the community engagement policy was updated back in the spring and what the administration has to do is whenever they're talking about a new program, something that's coming about, they need to make certain that they're doing four things, and I mentioned the four words earlier, that they're informing the community, that they're consulting with the community, that they're involving the community and that they're collaborating with the community. We want your feedback, right? You do not have to have kids in the school system in order to hold us accountable. We need everybody. Education should be everybody's business and so I'm saying to you all, all hands should be on deck. I have had immense joy doing this job. I go to bed sometimes having dreams about my job and how we can make things better and how we can improve. Please, keep staying in touch with us.
So transparency is actually one of the main drivers for me to run for the Board of Education because I've worked on this issue for five years. In 2016, Montgomery County Government embraced Open Data, which is a great thing, so you can go and download data sets. MCPS put their toe in the water and put it right back out. So we have not embraced Open Data. I spent five years to try to push us forward. We finally have one spreadsheet that is downloadable, although you probably don't even know about it because it's not really communicated well. It is our demographic data. You can download it and sort the data. We also have new school profiles online, although I've talked to parents and they know nothing about it because we don't advertise that we have school profiles. It's a visual representation of your school, so we're going to work to get that updated. Let's do better with the transparency. We used to, this Board of Ed, used to do town halls in each cluster every four years. Right now, they see areas and they don't do the town hall format. Instead, they go around to individual tables at schools and talk to them, but there's no open dialogue like we have here today. I will bring that back. I will ask to bring it back. We need to be out in the community where people are with town halls, just like the county council. Thank you.
The most basic job that we have is to communicate with our communities and we have to create structures of communication that are sensitive to the messages and the messengers that our school communities trust. We have 211 schools and they are all unique and different. And one of the things that MCPS has struggled with, that we must get better at, is continuously evolving the technology that we use, the community partners that we engage with, and the way we, the information that we actually create. It's not enough to say we translate everything. We do translate into many languages. We provide interpretation at some of our larger meetings, which is good, it's not enough. But the language that we use in and of itself is not the language that people use when they talk about their schools and their kids and the information that they want to see and know and understand. We have to get much better and really, I think it's our community that's going to be the most powerful drivers of helping us get better at sharing information in ways that not only are accessible, but are understandable. And we, again, we do have to get better. The transparency is also, I believe, essential. Whatever issue you have, whatever piece of information you want to see about our school system, it should be openly available and easily accessible on our website. Work to do.
Ms. Montoya.
Thank you. We need to release information in ways that our families can receive it. At my school, some families, if you send out something electronically, they're not going to get it. Teachers might need to write a Post-it note, maybe in another language. We're fortunate enough that last year, we had our first Spanish-speaking teacher at our school and that really helped a lot of our families and a lot of our kids. I've provided some translation services in the front office when a parent needed help. So we need to make sure that our staff are trained in the languages that our families need because we can't always afford interpretation services or they're not always accessible. We also need to release the data. Community members should not have to file Maryland Information Act requests to get data. They shouldn't have to face paying thousands of dollars to receive information that we should all be able to access so that we know what's going on in our schools, we know what's going on by breakdown of population, age, grade, subject matter. We shouldn't be, have reports hidden from us that we only find out about because a community organization does an MPI request and then contacts the local news, see the electric bus contract, right? Far too often, we're getting our information as parents, I can say this as a parent, from the news, from Twitter, from social media, and that is not the place that any of us want to see it from. So we need to make sure that our communications include releasing data and information so that everyone can access it in real time. Thank you.
Ms. Diaz.
I think our community is actually doing a great job in holding MCPS accountable recently. We've seen multiple organizations such as Montgomery Perspective, Moderately Moco, the Montgomery County Taxpayers League, the Parents Coalition, hold MCPS, the Board of Education to the line about what it is that's happening in our schools. They're the ones who are out there releasing the contracts, releasing, filing the FOIA's, just releasing all the information that we in the community need to know about what's happening in our schools. It is unfortunate that it's not happening, that we're not doing that, that the MCPS, Board of Education is not doing it on our own, but we have to commend and respect those organizations that are doing that already. I hope that they will continue doing so, that they will continue to hold MCPS and the Board of Education our feet to the fire because that is their role. If we think about basketball, that extra player on the bench, you know, and then we have, you know, the courtside people who are cheering them on, it is our responsibility in the community to hold MCPS accountable. So I want to respect those people. And then we need to, as a Board, be having meetings out in the community. Why are we only having our meetings at the Board of Education headquarters? These meetings should be rotated between all of our high schools. There's more than enough space to be able to do this. So we should be out there on a regular basis, having those meetings there and also holding open forums there. Thank you.
Does anyone care to rebut? Okay, we will move on to the next question, which has become a very hot-button issue in Montgomery County, and that is book banning. From the Diary of Anne Frank and Mouse to young adult novels with LGBTQ protagonists, book banning has become an issue nationwide. Here in Montgomery County, there is a movement to give parents opt-outs for primary-grade books featuring LGBTQ characters. At the same time, the JCRC has strongly supported mandatory instruction on the Holocaust, slavery, and the experiences of other marginalized groups such as the LGBTQ community to ensure historical accuracy and the inclusion of diverse voices. What is your position on mandated education on the Holocaust and experiences of other marginalized groups? And how much influence should parents have over what our schools teach? Ms. Evans is who we're starting with. Ms. Evans is who we're starting with.
So I don't support banning books. I do support trying to make certain that we're incorporating... It's on. It's on. Can you hear me now? Trying to put my lips. Okay. I'm going to kiss it in a minute. So I don't support banning books. I think it's the microphone. I don't support banning books and take real great pride in the curriculum that I supported and raised my hand for that was diverse. Our students came before us to say that they could see themselves reflected in the curriculum. I support incorporating Holocaust education in our curriculum. And I do believe that we have to get back to teaching kindness and dignity and when we're not in agreement, to disagree better. But I think it's really important to make certain that we're communicating what's in our curriculum, that our parents know, and that we're doing that in advance so that there are no surprises. But I do believe that it makes a big difference to sit next to someone who might be different than you so that you can learn a perspective that you did not have. We are trying to educate civil students that promote kindness, tolerance, and you do that by ensuring that you value and respect every student and every adult in the school building. And I want to make sure that no one can opt out, but I do value the voices of parents. And so I'm always open to you sharing your feedback. And as I mentioned before, sometimes we're going to disagree, and I hope we can do that in the most respectful way. But I know that we can find our shared interests and have a conversation.
I am a strong supporter of inclusive curriculum at MCPS, and I'm not for opting out of that curriculum. In fact, when this became an issue at the Board of Education, I came out to support our LGBTQ community and also the Board of Education in their decision to not have opt-outs. I collected over 3,000 signatures, including from some synagogues, that said that we support the Board of Education in this. Also, we need to review our curriculum to make sure it is culturally competent and that it digs into hard issues like the Holocaust. We need to make sure our kids are learning the facts. There is so much disinformation on the internet. And school is where we inoculate kids from that disinformation. So let's move forward with inclusivity. We really need to continue that effort. We can do even better, and I'd love to be part of that effort. Thank you.
I believe most centrally in my work on the board that it is our job to create welcoming and affirming classrooms that are windows and mirrors, where every student sees themselves reflected in the content they learn and the books that they read, but they also learn to appreciate and understand the experiences of those who are different from them. That is how we create a generation of critical-thinking problem solvers who see value in everybody and don't judge by personal characteristics and qualities that have nothing to do with the innate value of every single human being. I do not support opting out of any form of our curriculum except that that is embedded in COMAR for certain aspects of our health curricula because I really do think it is important for, and I think that we are actually failing in our role and in our job of preparing the next generation. If we do not create opportunities for them to be fully exposed to the truth of the world, that includes learning the truth and the history of marginalized groups, the LGBTQ community, learning about the Holocaust, learning deeply and truthfully about civil rights, including the civil rights history that was made right here in our county. That, to me, is non-negotiable.
Ms. Montoya.
I do not support banning books, and I do not support opt-out. I'm glad that we live in a county and a state that felt so strongly about it that in the last legislative session, they passed a bill called the Freedom to Read Act. And the Freedom to Read Act says that we don't ban books in the state of Maryland. I think as a Native American and a Mexican mother, it is extremely important to me that all of our students and families see themselves in the curriculum, in the books. One of my children is in advanced English, you know, for his age, and he gets to have a choice of different books, and there's always a great variety that he gets to choose from, some featuring different cultures. Our kids are at school to engage with others. We live in a very diverse county. Some of our cities even make the top list. We also have a lot of religious diversity here. So it's really important that everyone that lives here understands that we have to engage peacefully and respectfully. And even if we disagree, we don't need to demonize other groups and especially our students. When our students stand up to give their voice, whether it's at a Board of Education meeting or somewhere else, they must be treated with absolute respect because it is a brave act that they're doing, even if we don't agree with their viewpoint. So I absolutely do not agree with banning books, but I do agree that we need to treat all of our students and families with respect, irrespective of their beliefs. Thank you.
Ms. Diaz.
Yeah, so I definitely believe that at the high school level, even at the middle school level, our curriculum should be inclusive. I was one of the members who helped to develop the U.S. History Curriculum at the high school level. I was part of those conversations. I was at those trainings. I was there putting it together with Tafaritani, who was creating the curriculum for MCPS. So I believe at the high school, at the middle school level, inclusive curriculum, especially when it comes to looking at the history of different groups in our country, absolutely, we should be looking at that. They should be included. Children at that age are able to have those types of conversations. Now, when we look at the elementary school situation, that's vastly different. Our elementary school principals put together a white paper that explained the reasons why they did not want to include this sort of curriculum at the elementary school level. They talked about teacher trainings not being appropriate. They talked about the division that would happen in our communities. They talked about how many parents would decide to pull their children out and that it would create havoc for our teachers in the classroom. This was their major concerns. There are hundreds of pages of emails sent between principals to central office, to the Board of Education, about what was happening in our schools around opt-out. I speak to parents who are children, who are parents of children at the elementary school level, and they are concerned. They want our schools to be neutral at the elementary school level. Thank you.
Ms. Zimmerman.
Thank you. I do want to speak to Holocaust education. I absolutely support it, and I believe that it does need to go deeper with our students. They have a greater level of understanding. I do not support opting out of inclusive curriculum. Maryland law does allow for families to choose to opt out of the human health and sexuality portion of the curriculum. And if they choose to do so, the Board will support Maryland law. It is MCPS's job to educate all students. In public school, we welcome everyone. We prepare our students for a public life, and we teach them to interact with diverse people. Opting out is a slippery slope. If parents are able to opt out of one portion of the curriculum, why not another? Why not the Holocaust curriculum? I do not support banning our books, and I do not support excluding any of our students in our curriculum. Thank you.
Is there a rebuttal, anybody? Okay, all right. We're moving to our final question of the evening. And I want to, in asking our final question, reference, several of you referenced the Bethesda Magazine article that talked about Montgomery County public schools overall. There are a myriad of issues that are challenging our school system now. Black, brown, and low-income students, those with disabilities and learning differences, continue to experience dramatic disparities in academic achievement. The numbers that came out over the last two weeks were frankly shocking. Parents struggle to secure mandated services for their children with learning differences and special needs, and they're contending with continuing staff shortages. The Bethesda Magazine article also highlighted chronic absenteeism, grade inflation, all of these factors that are putting stumbling blocks before the ability of teachers to teach and students to learn and for all our students to learn. I want to give you the chance to respond to those metrics that we are looking at that are very concerning, that we're experiencing here and also nationwide. I think chronic absenteeism after COVID is not an MCPS problem strictly. But what is your vision? And what would you think should be done to address these very critical issues? We start with Ms. Stewart.
That is a question that could be answered in much longer than 90 seconds. But first, we need to look at those scores and see if we have some schools that are outliers where their gaps are larger than they should be, even compared with similar demographics. So then we can aim resources from central office as like emergency action to go into that school and either reteach, look at what the communication is with parents, you know, really dig in and improve the worst of the worst-case scenarios. Because we're in an emergency situation, and we need to treat it like an emergency. Beyond that, I would love to have more paraeducators and a pay scale for educator, paraeducators, because some paraeducators' jobs are extremely difficult and demanding so the teachers can get more support in the classroom. They absolutely need that. And as far as absenteeism goes, a lot of this is mental health issues. So let's go ahead and take advantage of the telehealth bill that passed from Annapolis, set up spaces in our schools so kids have more access to mental health through telehealth. That is one way we can expand access for them. And we need to just dig in on those opportunity gaps. Thank you.
Yes, so much there. And I do want to mention that I spend a lot of time in schools. I do shadow days where students in my internship group set up a day for me, and I just go to class with them all day long, whatever they're doing, I'm doing. And I want to be clear, I see great teaching happening in every single one of our schools. And so then it comes down to what tools are we giving our educators to deliver education in a way that is most suited to our 21st century realities? Because I think many people making education policy these days think schools like it was when they were there, and it's not. And I think our students in the room can tell us very directly that many of the old ways of doing things in a classroom just don't work anymore. And so I think some of the things that we're doing right now and are seeing progress, full immersion with the science of reading for our elementary grades and our secondary grades, true language development that's embedded across content areas. We're having teachers and language development folks come to the table and share with us the best practice that they're developing and that we're sharing across schools. Same with our new strategies around math and working with our emergent multilingual learners. Our special education department needs a complete overhaul because it needs to become an area of work that treats people with kindness and respect and believes that everybody involved in a special education program decision should be part of the process, and their opinion should be valued.
Ms. Montoya.
Thank you. Each of our demographic groups, or sometimes they're referred to as special populations, are different, so their needs are going to be different, and we need to individually tailor some of those solutions. But on kind of the broad scale, in terms of our achievement and opportunity gaps that we're seeing, you know, long-term, what we really need is smaller class sizes. Teachers cannot teach 30 students at one time when they're at different levels. They can't correct behaviors when you have that many kids. And I say this as a mom of elementary school kids, right? Even with two kids, it's challenging sometimes. So, you know, we really need to lower those class sizes but that means more teachers and more classrooms, and that means we need more money. So that's a long-term goal because we don't have that right now. So what can we do right now? What we can do is use things that work. DCPS had a high-impact tutoring program where students got tutoring three times a week in small groups, and they showed, they demonstrated growth. Did they close the gaps? No, but they're on their way. We have something similar in some of our MCPS schools. I know because my children's school has it called WIN, What I Need. Two to three times a week, depending on the school. The kids are broken into smaller groups based on what they need. Do you need enrichment? Great, you're going to get enrichment. Do you need help with math? You're going to get help with math. And again, we see the growth because my son's prior school did it, and we saw the Dibble scores at the beginning and the end of the year. We can also make it easier to volunteer. I know a lot of retirees who would love to come help in the classrooms. We have so many skilled and amazing people in Montgomery County who want to help, but so often, it's so challenging for them to do so.
Ms. Diaz.
So the MCCPTA Curriculum Committee had a meeting with MCPS officials earlier this year, meaning in the beginning of this year, where they looked at something called the Opportunity Myth. If you look it up online, it was issued by TNTP. And there, TNTP recommended that we, as, and MCCPTA also recommends, that we implement grade-level-appropriate assignments, strong instruction, deep engagement, and high expectations for our students. Why are they recommending that? Because it's not happening. How can we make that happen? First and foremost, I think we need to focus on helping our teachers implement a high-quality instruction with fidelity in the classroom. When I was in the classroom at Catesburg High School, I regularly invited central office writers of the curriculum into my class to observe me. I wanted to hone my craft. I wanted to perfect it. So they came in, ESOL, they came in to observe me. I had social studies people come in and observe me to talk about me. How can I improve my instruction? Then, on top of that, you know, I think it's important that we provide regular professional training on that curriculum that we're implementing, not just over the summer but also during the school year. This is something that's very important for our teachers. They're not implementing it, unfortunately, on a regular basis, and we need to do that. And then also, we need to have regular observations by our administration. Thank you.
If you are looking for someone that is certified in how to teach special education, that is certified in how to teach kids how to read, and certified in teaching our emergent multilingual learners and English language development, I have all of those certifications. If we're looking for someone to look at the curricula and say, "This one will work, this one will not," I am someone that has been teaching those. I'm able to look at that and say if it can be implemented well in a classroom or not. I do want to speak on our new implementation of the science of reading. It will take some time for us to see growth there as our students are now learning with a new curriculum type, but I do expect us to see better results there. I can tell you that I currently get 25 minutes per day to instruct my students in either enrichment or to address any gaps that they may have. And this is for both reading and math that I get that 25 minutes. I can tell you it's not enough time. I can't meet with every kid in 25 minutes every day. I should be getting 25 minutes per subject, minimum, every day to do this kind of work that our educators know how to do and that we want to do. We want to see our students do well. I would like to see us address our opportunity gap by increasing that time for our educators and also by seeing how we can implement that into our secondary schools as well. I want to see that implemented into middle schools and high schools so our kids can get what they need and get those gaps addressed.
I think I remembered everything. So I'll start with absenteeism. So we have to do a better job at communicating with our parents, particularly at the elementary level, what chronic absenteeism looks like. Because for our students in elementary, we're depending on the parents to get them to school, right? And so I would think if they had a better understanding of what that means and how it would impact their student, that they would get them to school. We are fortunate. We are so fortunate to have a student board member on the school board. And in talking with Purnell and with our other students, when I think about absenteeism at the secondary level, we need to make sure that we're asking our students, "What's not on the menu that you want to see at your school?" I know parents want to think and believe that our kids love school, but I know that you love your friends, you love the athletic team and the spirit that you all have at your school. So we just got to make sure that we have great things happening at our school that our students want to get involved in. When I think about our budget, you know, COVID happened, and for a lot of our families, it's difficult. And so I went to a forum recently where there was a... And so I went to a forum recently where there was a parent there, she was evicted, she had emergency funds from the county, but she was in a motel that was regularly interrupted by police activity, so she had three kids. And so my whole point in saying that, we don't know the story of every student that's come into our school building and what's actually impacting them being able to access their learning. The blueprint for Maryland has a lot going on that's great, that will help our students.
I'm going to ask if there are any rebuttals, and if there aren't, I am going to thank all of our candidates for engaging in such a robust conversation this evening on really, really difficult issues. I think that school board elections are some of the most important that we have, and I am so delighted that there were so many people here tonight, that there are so many people online. I want to encourage people to vote. That is our voice. That is the voice for our community. And I also want to encourage you to speak with our candidates now for a few minutes if you are interested and have any other questions. Please join JCRC for the remainder of our town hall events in this election season, and we thank you and wish you a good night and a shana tova for those who observed.